Well, what is a special meeting of the Willett City Council order for December 6th? And will we... Kathy, let's see who's here.
Okay.
Well, let's do the roll call. Mix it up.
Council members. Strangky, Madigal.
Here.
Hornstein.
Here.
Mayor Burton.
Here. So, could you all rise and join me in the pledge?
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God in the middle with liberty and justice for all.
So, we're going to complete all of our agenda tonight, but the Howard Hospital Foundation couldn't be here for their time slot, so we're going to accommodate them when they're able to get here. So, our first item then will be a presentation and discussion and a possible action regarding the downtown Willett streets and alleys connectivity study. Adrienne, does... Can I give that one to Dusty?
Yes.
Okay. Our city planner, Mr. Dooley.
Thank you, Mayor Burton.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, council members. So, I'm happy to present the final draft of the downtown Willett streets and alleys connectivity study. This is a separate but related project to the Main Street planning effort. We'll actually be presenting to you that final draft here later after this item. I've got about a 20-minute presentation for you. I mainly want to focus on some of the design concepts that have been developed through this process, but certainly answer any questions or explain any parts of the overall study that you may want to talk about. You have in front of you the final draft of the study. I was also able to just hand out a copy of the presentation, so trying to avoid you guys twisting your necks around to look at the screen and also trying to avoid putting the laser beam in your eye again. But the slides that you have in front of you match the slides that I'm showcasing on the screen behind you. So, just very quickly, the entire plan is more than just the project design recommendations. There's introduction, existing conditions within our downtown area, outreach process that we went through, our project goals along with the project designs, and then again, similar to the Main Street plan, includes cost estimates and potential funding sources. Special thanks to Mendocino Council of Governments and Phil Dow and Rhonda Ellard. It's that group that has funded this project. We certainly don't have funds to complete the improvements that are identified, but hopefully by having an approved project that puts us in a good position to receive grant funds in the future. So, we're looking for opportunities to enhance connectivity within downtown, to develop shovel-ready projects, and certainly to work in conjunction with the Main Street Quarter Enhancement Plan. So, it's important to note that both teams have been working concurrently with each other, and certainly the projects at their end will not conflict with each other and they will be cohesive. So, the plan, the study seeks to achieve the following: beautify and enhance downtown, provide better accessibility for pedestrians and bicyclists, maintain parking, and provide loading zones for downtown merchants, encourage local and regional bicycle and pedestrian mobility, improve public gathering spaces in downtown, improve traffic safety and visibility for motorists, and finally, improve lighting, including in our parking lots, wayfinding signage and landscaping throughout downtown. So, towards those goals, we aren't just pulling from the experiences that we've had at the start, from the start of this project. The consultants reviewed previous studies that were related to this project, including the downtown specific plan, City of Willett Bicycle and Pedestrian Specific Plan, et cetera. The public work staff, along with myself and our technical advisory group made up of in-part community members, took a walking tour of downtown. Public work staff was able to share some of their insights, some of their concerns, where they saw opportunities to improve traffic safety, pedestrian safety, and the community members were certainly able to chime in and provide some good information as well that was helpful in creating these design concepts that have been presented to you. The project study area is essentially California Street to the south, State Street to the north, School Street to the west, and then the railroad tracks to the east. The idea is that although it's limited in its project scope, the ideas that the council finds agreeable tonight could be used for similar streets and alleys throughout the city. To assist, we first started with coming up with existing conditions in our study area, so we identified crosswalks, bus stops, but again, really looking at establishing better circulation throughout the city. This wasn't, these concepts that we're showcasing to you didn't just come from the consultants or staff. We had a number of technical advisory group meetings, no less than four. At each meeting, we were able to fine-tune these concepts. We did a lot of revisions after both of our community workshops, which we had in June and August, and much of all of the council members were able to attend. Appreciate that. There was some key opportunities that we identified early on, including the delay in conflicts at our main intersection, which is Main Street Commercial, also traffic calming opportunities along Commercial, site distance constraints on Mendocino Avenue. We'll talk about all this a little bit more here as I go forward. Lack of wayfinding signage to off-street parking opportunities was another big one. I'm going to go a little bit faster here. Willett's bypass recap, we anticipate about a 20% to 25% reduction in traffic volume. That seems to be fairly accurate. I think it's going to take, you know, at least a few months for traffic patterns to settle, but from my experiences, it does seem to be about a 25% reduction. A higher if you're just solely looking at some of the bigger trucks. So, we, as the technical advisory group, we met and were able to prioritize some areas. We settled on Commercial Street, West Van Lane and Muir Lane, our alley network, including East Van Lane and Schmidtbauer Lane, and then Mendocino and Wood Street. East Valley Main Intersection was considered. We thought the other consultant group with the Main Street project identified some good solutions to make that a safer intersection, and the council tweaked that a little bit, but we still have a design that certainly creates a safer situation than exists today in the minds of staff. School Street and Madden Street, there's an opportunity for improvements there, but again, some of the improvements we're identifying on Commercial Street, such as reducing pedestrian crossings, opportunities for better pedestrian visibility, et cetera, can be applied to those streets as well. So, again, the concepts we identify here hopefully can be used citywide.
Are those in lighter print for any particular reason, or is it...
Because we didn't choose them. The four on the top are the ones we chose to focus on, and the other two got dropped off.
How are we going to signage the Schmidtbauer Lane when we use that to get into the parking lot? Do you have any idea, any ideas of what we're going to do? Because that's narrow space, plus it's, you know, bordered by two buildings, and it would be very hard if you were just a tourist through town to thought maybe you'd like to park there.
Yeah. I don't know specifically where signage will be, but it needs to be in a place that's highly visible. It needs to be large enough and stick out so that it's, you know, vibrant and easily visible to somebody that's, you know, not, you know, visiting maybe for the first time. And when you're considering things like shutting off access to a parking lot from Main Street, you know, that really shouldn't happen unless you have abundant signage, you know, showing someone how to clearly get to where they want to get to.
Yeah. That would be something that we need to really keep in mind.
Yeah. To the point where I don't think you'd want to do some of these improvements unless you have the signage in place first.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to just kind of keep going here. If I skip a slide, you want me to go back, just let me know. So, we're going to start getting into our first concept here, which is this idea of making Mendocino and Wood Street a one-way couplet. In this concept, Mendocino Avenue, which is currently a two-way street, becomes a one-way street heading westbound, and then Wood Street, which is a one-way street but is currently east ba... or, excuse me, currently westbound, would reverse and go eastbound, and I'll explain some of the logic behind it here hopefully. Just as Wood Street is undersized for a two-way street, Mendocino matches that width, or is within a foot or so, I believe. And so, you do have an undersized street that's currently a two-way. There's also an issue with sight distance when pulling off of Mendocino onto Main Street. You've really got to stick your car out into the crosswalk and beyond in order to see the traffic to be able to make a left or right-hand turn out of there. Wood Street has a little bit better visibility in that, actually, Main Street actually starts to curve east at that intersection, and so you have a little bit better visibility to see oncoming traffic. Here's an example.
Dusty, what's the feasibility, excuse me, of changing the parking lot entrance at the Rexall Building? I know you have this on there, but it's private property. What's, is that a doable thing?
I think it would need to be a partnership with the private property owner. I'm not aware that we could force that change. But the idea is we're trying to minimize the left-hand turns or the driveways onto Main Street to allow for a little bit safer pedestrian route along Main Street.
Yeah, it makes sense, but I was just wondering about the practice, you know, ability.
It takes away half this work.
Here's, oh, sorry. Here's a photo showing what I was pointing out, where, you know, it's great that we've got a building that comes right up against the curb, but when you're trying to pull out of, off of Mendocino and see oncoming traffic to make a safe turn onto Main, or even to go straight for that matter, you end up having to stick your car out far enough where you're starting to block the crosswalk and whatnot. So, again, just trying to explain the logic of, you know, why Mendocino's going westbound and Wood's going eastbound. There's, after the last meeting, we heard from some businesses that were really concerned about access to parking and any loss of parking in downtown, and understandably so. This is on a cross-section of West Mendocino. This was presented to you at the last council meeting when we took up this study. And, you know, in this, in this concept, we show widening the sidewalks and still maintaining parking on one side and then one traveling. Another alternative that the council may want to consider is leaving the sidewalks six-foot wide, which if it became a one-way street, would actually allow us to have parking on both sides of the street. So, for instance, here's a photo showing a car parked on either side of Mendocino, and you can clearly see that, you know, even a bigger truck would be able to maneuver between those two parked cars on Mendocino Avenue. So, there is enough width, not by much, but there is an opportunity through this one-way couplet with Mendocino-Wood to increase off-street parking, or, excuse me, on-street parking. And, let's see, Jeremy and I got together, and it appears that, you know, plus or minus one, we could add 16 additional parking spaces on Mendocino and Wood Street through this one-way configuration. You can currently see, you know, you have a loading zone on Mendocino, and the other side of the street is completely red striped. It's a little bit faded, but that becomes an opportunity to provide additional parking along the north side of Mendocino Street there. You certainly would keep it red striped for a certain distance from its intersection with Main, but the rest of that area then becomes parking. The loading zone could stay on this side of the street if you go on the other. But again, wanted to point out that there is an opportunity with this one-way configuration to supply approximately 16 additional parking spaces.
That's west of one way, west of Main Street.
This is looking down West Mendocino towards Main Street, running eastbound.
Yeah, the dimming floor for shuffle.
Yeah. We refer to the 16, west of Mendocino.
If you would, you would add up both East Mendocino, West Mendocino, and Wood Street. So, that's, some of those 16 spots are on the other side of Mendocino here.
Dusty, you made a comment that when we started talking about a lot of these things, you said something like, "These are options that you will have the opportunity to decide on." And I assume tonight's the night we're going to decide on these things, correct?
Staff's hoping, yeah.
So, I guess my question is, how do you see this working out? I mean, you're going through the presentation, then we're going to want to go back through each one of these items piece by piece. Is that the way you see this going tonight?
It's the council's prerogative. I can start with this concept, and then we can talk about it before we move on to the next one, which is the alley network, or I can certainly go through all of them.
I'd like, I'm going to say that we go through it all in brief notes if you have stuff that you want to deal with. Otherwise, we're going to just have a hard time making progress.
Okay. Very good. So, then going over to East Mendocino, we again show East Mendocino being a one-way westbound. One of the purposes of having this westbound is to avoid the conflict that can occur when folks pulling out of the parking in front of Ardella's. They can back up. It's hard to see pedestrians coming this way that are behind them. There's also the conflict that exists today of folks making right-hand turns off of Main Street. So, staff's seen situations where a car's backing up, this person goes to make a right-hand turn, they can't quite do it, they come somewhat close to colliding, and now this vehicle that's making the turn is now backing up traffic. So, by having the one-way westbound on East Mendocino, we avoid that conflict of cars pulling in here. By pulling the existing parking off of the private property and onto the public street, and then using the diagonal situation, we create a situation pedestrians can cross in front of the cars. And it also opens up this reddish-orange-brown area, becomes private space. This isn't Ardella's. The building's actually back here. So, by pulling the parking into the, into the street, we open up this area that's currently Ardella's business. They could use it for outdoor seating. It could become a garden area, you know, whatever they felt was the appropriate use of that space. But that's an advantage of this design. Again, we continue to maintain parking here. I think we go from seven to five spaces here, but then we gain additional parking over here by having this be a one-way street. So, again, overall, for the Mendocino-Wood one-way couplet, we gain approximately 16 spaces, the way that this design's currently configured. And then here's just a cross view of Wood Street. So, now, now we're on to the alley system. Here's a shot of Muir Lane and Van Lane and a number of improvements. I'm going to go through this a little bit quicker, but I think you've got some pretty good idea of how this one works. So, we're, excuse me, let me go back a little bit. So, one of the big things we're talking about, this is the Van Lane crossing here on Main Street. We're talking about becoming these temporary bollards right here to shut off vehicular access to this alleyway. This has become sort of a dangerous spot that isn't used correctly. You have good access in and out of this area already. There's one garage for residents right here, and that's why these bollards are here rather than at the end of the street. That way, we maintain access for this individual to be able to pull into their garage off of Muir. And I did speak to this property owner, and while he's certainly willing to change his mind, he was supportive of this idea, provided it was something that the community wanted. This is looking at, this is West Van Lane, looking at Main Street. So, again, you have a situation where, you know, you can travel both directions on Van Lane currently, and you have improvements that go right up to the edge of sidewalks. Again, you're in a situation where you're pulling out and having to get into the cross rock and pedestrians' way to see your way out of there. After I took this photo, a car actually took a left turn into this alley, and we both surprised each other. So, you also have along this alley gates that open outwards, so you can imagine you're going to open your door, and there's a car driving down the lane. That's probably not the best situation. So, this also becomes an opportunity to maybe have a little public, public space to the benefit of downtown businesses, hopefully. You can see it's kind of a narrow street right now. Working with the fire department, any improvements that we did put in there would need to be temporarily and be rolled away because, you know, obviously, they need to maintain access to this alleyway, as Pete certainly can contest to. So, here we are looking at Niko's, looking at West Van Lane. We presented these to you last time. This is the idea of keeping the crosswalks as they exist today and then putting up some signage. Or if we were able to actually shut down Van Lane on both sides, it opens up this opportunity to do this sort of enhanced crosswalk and create a little connection between our public spaces and whatnot. Let's see here. Yeah, this is looking at East Van Lane and Schmidtbauer. This is an alternate design for the parking lot, and we lose a couple spaces by going through this design, but we open up this public plaza space, which hopefully becomes a fun place to hang out and helps enhance our downtown businesses. It was actually our own councilman, Mad Strong, who presented this alternative idea to staff, and we certainly fine-tuned it a little bit, but I wanted to showcase it to you. Here you have the Van Lane Crosswalk, as you saw in the design concept, but although this is shut off, this current alley is, yeah, is shut off from vehicular access, the driveways moved down here. And so, if the council was wanting to, you know, support the Van Lane Crosswalk but didn't want to lose the access into the public parking off of Main Street, this becomes a feasible idea. These two parking spots probably would go and become, again, this public space here on both sides that would be divided by the driveway, and we end up with 14 spaces. I think currently we have 16 spaces in that parking lot. The other design, alternative, is showing 12, and this one's showing 14. Continue to have one-way access off of Schmidtbauer, and then just as it is today, you know, the exit is East Van Lane.
I think there are 20 there now.
Because they're nose-to-nose in the middle?
Depend, okay, yeah. You're right there, so 20. So, going from 20 to 14 there, or 12. Just some fun things here. Here's the community center, and it's very rich. He did all this stuff right here. Need little concepts, definitely. I heard a lot of people say, you know, there's better places to spend money for underground utilities, and again, they're probably right. These are concepts, and, you know, certainly it's going to take time to find funding for all of it, and we're going to need to prioritize how we want to spend our limited funds. But it certainly would be an enhancement of today's conditions. This is Schmidtbauer Lane coming off of Commercial. So, again, we're talking about making this a one-way in. We have the same issue, whereas you're trying to go out, you have the theater in the other building right up against the sidewalk, and it's just not safe to have to pull out into the pedestrian walkway to make your turns. So, you know, staff would look to council support to making that a one-way entrance. And then certainly, again, looking for some enhancements to beautify our downtown and create some cool spots to hang out and walk.
That's a good question, that last... So, one of the themes throughout it is that trash bins are there right now. So, on that last slide, does that have the trash moving to the other side of the street?
I think it has it being consolidated here. We'd also look to see if the local businesses wanted to, I don't need to show a slide, if they wanted to maybe take one of the parking spaces in the public parking lot and have that be the trash center to kind of get it away from the businesses a little bit. You know, again, it's a trade-off in that you're losing another parking spot, but it gets the trash out of the alleyway, and we could, you know, certainly fence it and kind of out of view.
And Van Lane's, I would, if the property owners speak later on, I'd be interested to hear, like, where could, you know, where could the trash receptacles go, especially in that...
Right now, we show them consolidated up against the building, but there's some other options that we could explore with them.
Thank you.
Existing conditions on West Commercial. Currently, you have no parking along here. There's one or two spots here. You have diagonal parking in front of Van Hotel, and then some additional diagonal parking in front of these businesses. One of the main things that both your public work staff, community development, the engineers that were part of the project, your landscape architects, was what was recognizing the conflict with pedestrian crossings and vehicle turns at this intersection. So, there's a strong recommendation to establish left-turn lanes at both West and East Commercial onto Main Street that coincide with dedicated left-turn signals. This is going to improve circulation. It's going to avoid that conflict where you have the simultaneous turning movements with pedestrian crossings. One of the trade-offs, the main trade-off was, is though, is that this is where we've lost a number of parking spaces with our downtown streets and alleys project. We potentially gained them back with the Mendocino-Wood Street couplet, but to accommodate the left-turn lane, we lose the one or two parking, probably two compact parking spots or one truck parking spot. By going to the, from the diagonal to the parallel parking, we lose another couple spots, again, trying to avoid the conflict where bicycles are coming behind the parking places. This is a left-turn lane. This is straight. This is a de facto right-hand turn. So, even with this bulb out, according to the, to our consultants, you are able to make that right-hand turn, not just regular vehicles, but our big 20-foot-wide semis that are dropping off things to our local businesses are able to make that turn again. And I'll just mention, this is an example, I mean, if this is something that the council looks to support, and we end up going and making these improvements, obviously, there's an opportunity to fine-tune these designs and make sure that they work, we're interested in creating situations where all users of the road can't functionally use it. And, you know, some of our local guys have been really good about letting me know that, you know, if we do go look to support some of these designs, that they're offered up their trucks, and they'll come and drive through some of these things for us and make sure they work. And same with the Willett Unified School District and letting us use some mock-ups with their school buses too. So, I mean, staff would be real careful to make sure that we're designing things that are appropriate for all users of the road. This is an alternative for West Commercial. We maintain the diagonal parking, except it becomes back-end parking. Some of the tag group members really wanted to see this idea tried within the city and felt like this was an appropriate location to try it. Just like, you know, parallel parking can be a little bit difficult at times, you know, it'd probably take a minute to get used to this. Pete's seen this in other jurisdictions up in Washington, and it seems to be successful for them. It's kind of a new trend, but, but again, the idea is, you know, backing in and then being able to see bicyclists that might be coming in front of you before you turn out. We lose, again, still losing the parking here to accommodate the left, and then a couple spots here to accommodate the through and the de facto right-turn lane, and we maintain parking here, it's just a turn the other way.
And there's not currently a crosswalk right there, right?
There is, yeah.
Is there?
Yeah. We're, it's, there's a visibility issue. It's not the safest crosswalk, so here we're showing a decent bulb out to shorten this crosswalk distance and allow the pedestrians and the vehicles to see each other.
Okay.
What do those things represent?
You know, I wondered that earlier, too.
I think it's like you're getting to the crosswalk.
It's like little warnings signs.
It's not even that, too.
Yeah, there you are, John.
I was looking for you, buddy. What are those?
They're called Shark Tea.
Shark Tea.
And they're an advance warning to a crosswalk and they're a new standard.
That's not the things that pop up and rip your tires.
And I should point out that, you know, we've got Jeremy Runka with us, we've got John Gibbs and Jillian with our other consulting group and they are more than happy to answer any questions that you might have tonight. We've got Allison with us as well and they're all more well-versed in these types of planning efforts than I am. So if I say something incorrect or you think, I mean, feel free to speak up. East Commercial Street, so Main to Humboldt. And wait, actually, let me go back to this one here. On the other side of Commercial, we're losing parking for the same reason, to accommodate this left turn lane. This is Brick House Coffee here. We're not losing parking on Main Street for, as it's already red-stripped, goes back to here. So no loss of parking on Main Street at that location, but you are losing on the opposite side as well as in front of Brick House to accommodate this extended bulb out. So this potentially becomes an opportunity to create public-private space, whether it's outdoor seating or landscaping or art, whatever it may be. Or if the business preferred to have, maintain a couple parking spaces that are there currently, then we would just eliminate that and allow those two parking spots to remain. Tom's not here tonight and so I think I know what his preference is, but I don't want to say in case I'm wrong.
How about parking on the north side of Main Street? You're not showing that. Is that something that could be done in front of the church?
Here?
Yeah. We've never had parking there, but why wouldn't that work there?
Sure we got it. Jeremy, did you?
I'm trying to think.
There's parking there now.
I think there is parking there now.
There is? I've never seen cars parked there.
It doesn't, it may not feel comfortable to park there, just like the spaces that you'd be losing on the north side of Commercial. It is kind of a de facto turn lane right now and so I think people know that and don't...
Yeah, it's certainly not a popular parking spot, but there is parking there, it sounds like.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so now we're heading down. Here's the fire department, here's us right here. So continuing to have a continuous bike lane down here. You know, right now there's parking here for the fire department and, I mean, this shows, you know, so you don't have the jog in the road to accommodate the parking, it shows the parking lost. But the reality is, is, you know, the fire department being first responders, you know, unless we find some alternative that's completely, you know, supported by them, we're not going to move those parking spaces. You know, we talked about maybe moving here, but then there's an issue if there's enough maneuvering area to back up, so maybe that's not the solution. You know, possibly looking to, you know, establish fire department parking over here. You know, I'm not sure, you know, it's not super important in the overall grand scheme of things, but I just wanted to point out that, you know, this shows a loss of parking for the fire department. You know, the city's not interested in making that change unless, you know, an appropriate alternative can be found and supported by our fire department.
Or the fire department changed locations. We couldn't think about that.
That might be, or they might change the access onto here instead of Main Street. So...
I had, I don't think I mentioned this the last time we looked at this. I have talked with the fire department and the fire chief about this and they were interested in exploring this, so this just didn't, you know, come from us.
Oh, okay. That still seems like an awkward place to put the fireman's vehicles. You know, it's going to take time for them to park properly.
And, you know, they, this isn't pencil and they've had the eraser the whole time, you know, so don't want you to...
Well, their design on their new firehouse, if it is built there, is to access it off the Humboldt Street. Engines enter and exit off Humboldt, not...
Makes sense, less traffic.
It was the last time I saw it. It may have changed.
So you've seen these again for, we're continuing to head down East Commercial. We see some improvements across the rail tracks for pedestrians. We see the bulb outs for some safer crosswalks in front of the scum train. A lot of people, you know, from out of the area especially, park over here and then access the scum train depot on the other side of Commercial. So again, bulving it out where possible. And again, you know, our consultants were able to look and engineer each of these turn lanes to make sure that they work, but again, as you go to build them, you know, there's an opportunity to find new things and double check to make sure that the math is right, it matches reality.
I like the crosswalk for the future rails-to-trails connection.
At the time, you were, yeah, yeah.
I'm not giving up hope.
No, neither is staff. So here's the, you know, here's the cross-section of what we're looking for. So, you know, you've got widened sidewalks, you've got parking on both sides still, no loss of parking for this section of Commercial. You've got a bike lane, you've got a two-foot buffer, and you've still got your two travel So, you know, a common thing throughout this is, especially as we start changing streets around and everything, is it becomes important for label and signage. The city might want to consider kind of coming up with our own theme. You know, there's, just shows a kiosk that we might locate, you know, downtown or somewhere else that shows you here's where you are, here's where, you know, here's where the things that you might want to visit are. Just having clear signage and directions so that, you know, folks from out of town can connect the dots. So, yeah, you're at the scum train, but I have no idea that downtown's right ahead. You know, I'm in, I'm getting gas at Safeway and I'm getting ready to head the foot rag and I have no idea that downtown's ahead or that the museum and, you know, the dog park and everything else. So again, just using signage and trying to come up with a cool theme that helps connect the dots within downtown. I mean, personally, this isn't good enough, you know. This is an existing sign talking about a parking lot being two blocks up. We can do better than that and, you know, we need to, especially now with the bypass happening. And then lastly, if we could all just maybe take a page out of Mayor Burden's book and we could all just start driving our pre-1920 horseless carriage, that would go a long way towards reducing conflict throughout, I think.
That looks like a comfortable car.
Yes, built for my size.
So that's what I had to read into you guys.
Yeah, well, we're starting up here and if you made the list, go ahead. Thank you for this. I mean, I know a lot of work has gone into it, not just staff, but community. And there's a lot of things I like, let me just say that first off. I realize that this is a plan that we will hopefully fulfill over the next, you know, decade or so, but I'm still not sold on the one-way, just personally as one... I think we should hold off on that and, you know, go for some of the other things, but I am all about the alleys, you know, the Van Lane. I really like that design. I like Madge's suggestion. I'm a supporter of the one big crosswalk, two crosswalks is nutty, what we have now, that doesn't really work. So I like the idea of making that a plaza, making it attractive, especially with lighting because I know that that's an issue in the, especially with the theater, you know, going back there, it's dark, it's not as inviting. So I think that could be really great. I like Madge's suggestion for the turning in from Main Street. We heard from the public that there was lots of concerns about blocking off the ability to park from seeing Ardell's and pulling off or seeing Ego's and pulling off. I think it would make it so that that public plaza area would be more used if there was an access up Main Street. Yeah, I think this was mentioned, I don't think we should mess with the fire department for now. And I would be interested later to find out if we've made any progress with the undergrounding. I think that the alleyway is actually a really good area to do that because it's a focused area, it's downtown, there's a lot of public activity there and as it is right now, there's just a lot of wires and pipes and things like that. So if we had attractive, I can think of a handful, Petaluma has some really attractive wide walkways that, you know, probably used to be alleys, but now they're paved and, you know, nice to walk down. And so, I'm, so far, and I'll be happy to hear from the public, but I think we should hold off on the one-way, but I like everything else. I like Commercial, I like the dedicated turn lanes. I'm okay to lose a couple spaces if we can turn, because I'm primarily thinking about all the traffic that comes from Brookside School and, you know, this area after work hours. We need, that's one of the main reasons why I think Mendocino has to still be that two ways.
Right, so if this is, if, thank you Holly, the council. Right now, the, probably when you're exiting the school, you're either looking to come out Commercial or Mendocino Street.
Yeah.
And so with this one-way couplet, you still could possibly come out Commercial Street or you're going a block up School and then going down Wood Street, right?
I get it, but I barely am, you know, remembering that.
That's all I wanted to hear, I got it, yeah, thank you.
You know, I still find myself wanting to go, you know, both directions on Wood Street, but I appreciate the work and I can see the benefits to it, but I just think that the community won't go for it, to be honest.
Larry, you want to...
I think everything that he did is really good. I really appreciate it. I just wanted to know the one thing about the signage and, but I think everything else did a wonderful job. Thank you very much.
Ron, do you care to...
Yeah, going to the, that little parking lot across from Ardell, from Nixon Music Shop. I kind of like, you know, Madge's design, but I'm still a little conflicted about having an entrance from Main Street because if you're going to create a couple of public plazas there, that means there's going to be a lot of people supposedly milling around in that area and coming in off of Main Street could present a hazard. So I'm wondering if we could modify that, because it does give us a few more parking places. If we could modify that to the point to eliminate that entrance off of Main Street, so you Schmidtbauer Lane, turn the, you know, the diagonals in the opposite direction so you can access them. Now, the problem with that is, is that when you want to leave that, somehow you would have to back out and go, you know, onto the Van Lane. That could be, I'm not sure how to deal with that. But for me, that would be a nice, you know, a nice combination of the way, but I'm, like I say, I'm really concerned about having access off of Main Street for that reason. To Holly's remark about the one-way streets on Mendocino and Wood Street, I like them. I think it's a good idea, that, you know, you had some sound reasons for wanting one-way traffic because of the spacing and all this other stuff. It's not that big a deal to go around the corner, you know, if you want to make a turn, you know, it's not, you know, we're not talking about miles out of your way, so I don't see that as being a real issue. And, yeah, I agree, some of the stuff, I mean, it's beautiful. And I assume that the way this is going to work is that sometime in the future, you're going to come back to us and say, okay, we're ready to take on this particular project. And at that point, we're going to fine tune it, right? I mean, whether we stripe it this way or that way or however, is that, we'll still have the ability to do that somewhere's down the line?
I believe that's correct, right Adrian?
Yes.
Yeah, so I mean, I'm not overly concerned about what we lock into right now because it looks like, except for the bulb outs, you know, that's going to be pretty permanent. But the other stuff, we can discuss that in depth, one project at a time. So, except for the, my comment about the parking lot coming off of Main Street, I'm good to go.
Well, I think you're right, Ron, to think that the wisdom that's going to be expressed here tonight will supersede the wisdom that comes four years down the road when we're ready to take this out to bid. This is going to prevail, it's pretty naive. You know, the one thing that Holly said that I just want to remind, I guess I would just try and amplify a little bit, you know, clearly when you look at the utilities on that little alley, they're not very sightful. They don't add a lot to the picture, but I would just remind that everyone that PG&E has a fund that grows over time.
Merry Christmas, just trying to find.
PG&E, you know, contributes a yearly amount or, I tell you the truth, I'm not quite sure where that goes, but we have this fund available to us held by PG&E for undergrounding utilities. And it was the priority of earlier councils to grow that fund in order to underground the utilities. The last time that discussion came up, it was to underground the utilities around the City Park. And if you take a picture of that and look at it for the utilities, it offers the same kind of view of gee whiz would be nice. And, you know, and I guess I would add that at this point, we have, you know, my concern really about undergrounding the utilities earlier on, 10, 20 years ago, was is that I thought it would have a negative impact on the root structure of all of our trees that border the park on, next to the sidewalk, because they're, that roots are out into the street. We have, you know, an opportunity now that we've pretty well decided those trees are all coming out, if they haven't come out. So there is a, you know, I think an opportunity here in the next five, through the next five or 10 years to do that project without having the concern of the impact to those root structures in those trees. So as, you know, as I, I mean, both, both things will be improved, you know, aesthetically and safety-wise. I mean, PG&E wants to get those utilities out of the air for safety reasons more than the aesthetic reasons, but I'd have a hard time changing my perspective on a priority for the use of that funds to direct it to the alley project over the City Park project right now. And, you know, again, regarding the details of the one-way streets and access to the parking lot and all this, I think we're just offering a perspective of today. This is yet a plan that is going to, we hopefully, we'll be able to pull it off the shelf here in some coming year and put it into deal. Other than where it is, you know, the bulb outs and the improvements that are going to get built on Main Street in the next 24 months, that is happening. Those are the real deal. These are an indeterminate project at this point, so. Those are my thoughts. I would open it up to public comment and anybody that would wish to address the community on that, please step forward and try not to be too authoritarian on the gavel in terms of time. Three or four minutes is what we're shooting for. Good evening. My name's Alan Fullery, was a fighter here once upon a time, and just want to commend Dusty and this crew for the good job they did and the consults of capturing, I think, all the previous work that's gone into this and the sentiments of the citizens. It's a process, it's impossible to make everybody happy, you know, these things have so many details that, you know, somebody's not going to like one or the other, but I think they've done a really good job of trying to get a handle on what the issues are and identifying and come up with solutions. And I thank the council for taking this on. It's something that's been, you know, years and years of work have gone into this. When I got here, One Town One Vision was, had already come up with ideas like this. A lot of previous work has gone in, this kind of culmination of it. I think a good point that Bruce and Ron both made is that this is a planning document, it's not, you know, just because it shows six trees on the south side of Commercial Street doesn't mean you have to put six trees right there, you know, you can massage these as the bits and pieces come together and you, so you're going to do the Wood Street piece. You go out for funding and come up with a very specific plan of engineering and everything else, that's when you make the final decisions on some of these. So these are, these are concepts, they're good concepts. I think that it's time to go forward with these. I urge you to adopt this. I'm not going to be able to stay for the main...
I'm not going to be able to stay for the Main Street thing, but it's kind of the same, the same idea. These are, these are good things for downtown, especially with the bypass. I think with the traffic, you can see it's already backed off. We need to do some things downtown to make people want to stay here, make people feel safe here, make people want to start businesses here, and this is a good, a good step to do it. So, thank you for doing this, and I urge you to adopt these plans the way they are.
Thank you, Alan. Who else?
Mr. Swan. You knew I couldn't get out of here without something to say. Pete Swanton. Bruce, just to follow up on what you said in terms of the, the undergrounding of the utilities, as I understand it, they're $780,000, is that right? So, we did talk to and discuss with the person out there, I can't remember this person's name, there was a guy and a gal. Anyway, they said, what, we said, what about around the park? And they said, well, there's not enough money right now to do that, for sure there's not, but there may be in the future. And again, I don't know what the numbers are every year, how it accumulates. If there was enough money to do around the park, I'd be ball for doing it and being done. Maybe it makes sense to do part of it, I don't know. But they did say that the complete van alley would be absolutely enough money to finish that project entirely. Again, without knowing the numbers, how long it would take, you know. I can just say, speaking on behalf of the business folks, I know they want to see change as soon as possible, because there's a sense of real concern. And so the sooner we get change, the better off we will be. I love the one-way. I didn't know exactly what to expect, but I see a lot of benefits of the one-way, especially since we're going to be losing parking spaces elsewhere. That's probably the biggest benefit that I see, that we gain parking spaces. Where we lose elsewhere, we gain there. At Ardella's, it makes sense to me. I know that, you know, with the bulb-out there and the people walking in front instead of behind cars, totally makes sense to me. Let's see, Commercial Street. You know, we're going to be, as I understand, from Main Street to, say, Pizza to Go, we would be losing parking spaces, there would be no parking spaces, or would they be parallel?
There's like three, I think, those three or so parallel.
Okay, alright.
But no longer diagonal.
Okay.
So that's why you lose everything.
Okay, so there you go. There's the sacrifice you make for safer pedestrians, and I'm all about safer pedestrians. So, okay, that sounds good. I'd like, initially what MAGE had proposed, and I kept looking at it and I'm thinking, I'm not so sure, Ron, no view on that. I still like what the city had come up with, the planners had come up with initially, about coming down Schmidbauer and making that entrance and then exiting. I don't think it's much to ask. The, for the drivers to go around half a block and half a block, especially with the iconic letter P in blue and white signs. And then the crosswalk in the middle is, that just continues the whole theme of pedestrian. It just ties it all together. And I understand that is raised a little bit, or is it not? Is it just slightly high? Just a little bit?
I believe it is.
Yes, that's what they said.
Okay, because I can tell you now, I don't know, but Larry, if you noticed it, but in the event, hey, you know, we asked for, we got it, we got less traffic, and there's real advantages to that, especially with the trucks. But I will tell you that the traffic has sped up, in my opinion, the traffic has sped up. That would make a nice little, slow people down just a little bit, and along with the bulb-outs and stuff, so. If that's raised, that's a good thing.
Good comments, thanks Pete. Anybody else like to address this issue? Yeah.
Good evening, Bill White. And I have, I must confess, haven't kept up with a lot of this, so maybe some of this has been handled. But one of the things I always thought we should have, and we had, was very successful when I lived in Santa Barbara, was an architectural board review. And for aesthetics, and just having to do with the overall town planning and, like, what do you do with these buildings that are owned by people out of town that just, you know, dissolve, should be torn down, raise the taxes, yeah. But there are other things that can be done through an architectural board review. We have architects, builders, artists, and all, and it has to do with signage, and colors, and things of this sort. The other thing is that, I don't know if this has been addressed, but having a pocket park on the east side of Main Street, just north of Pete's. That parking place is rarely full. I know it's, it's relatively convenient, but I think to have a little park to give more soul to the downtown area, could be a destination, be a place where you could have benches, maybe, you know, brown bag lunches there for the people that are working in the area. But it could be an aesthetic attribute to the downtown. Nice little twisting spot, destination, meet you in the park.
Interesting spot.
And, so.
New term.
You know, when we have trains, maybe someday, this is something we had in the 19th century, trains, that will have less traffic. Like, you know, but the, the paving peoples have dominated transportation in this state long enough. Someday we're going to have trains. Like to do, and you?
Thank you. On the downtown streets and alley corridor adoption study, option, if this study, is anybody else that would like to address that? Second, third, and last call. So I'm going to bring it back up here, I'm going to ask if anybody'd like to make a motion.
Well, we don't have the motion laid out for us, and we're going to have to wing it. So basically, the motion would be to accept the, the Streets and Alley Connectivity Study. I mean, is that, is that good enough? Is that?
Unless there's something?
Approve it by resolution, so there's a resolution.
Oh, there is, I'm sorry, there is, okay. Okay, so that would be my motion.
To approve the resolution.
To approve staff recommendation.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Madge, go.
Yes.
Marissa?
Yes.
Mary, pardon?
Yes. Okay, we got through that. I did see what suspiciously looked like people from the hospital walking in. Do you have your full team here, or are you waiting for somebody else? We can do one more item on our agenda, or we can do you.
Thinking now.
You're ready? Okay, well, this item that, we're going to deal now is a presentation by Howard Hospital and Foundation, and by way of introduction, I have a couple of comments I'd like to make. What this, what this is, what we're going to hear about tonight is a journey that started around 22 years ago, when the city learned that, that Remco was in, going, going to be shutting down and maybe going into bankruptcy. And myself and Mr. McIntyre were out visiting the landfill one day and talking about this, and, and we were concerned about losing 200-plus jobs in the community, of some of the best-paying jobs in town. So, we thought, well, we're pretty hot-shot local politicians, we'll just change that deal. And, so we started talking to the people that were running Remco at the time, and they, they told us that they had an interest from a company called Vickers Hydraulics, that was interested in buying the facility and running it, but they were concerned about the environment, assuming some of the environmental issues that were known to be there. And, so we talked to our local attorney and stuff about that, and were directed to some hot-shot attorneys in the San Francisco, whose names I kind of forget at the moment, doesn't make any difference, but they said, oh no, you know, we can, we can set that up so they won't, they won't, they won't be exposed to that liability. Well, that, we pursued that for a couple of months, and, and clearly we were unsuccessful. And they, they went ahead and auctioned off the facility in, I don't know, '95 or '96, somewhere there. And, but what that did do is it gave us a, a conduit to, to a legal team that said that they could force the cleanup of the property, as opposed to it being, it being left to the regular devices of the Regional Water Quality Control Board and the normal enforcement. Now, whether that ended up being a good decision on our part or not, I would not leave it to others to say, but, because it took 20 years. But, but that's what we did. The city sued on behalf, as, as, as the, an affected public entity, and in federal court. And, and ensuing settlement was made with the owners that, as part of their obligations in the cleanup, they was funded, they had to fund, eventually fund two accounts. One of them was $2 million for natural resources damages, and the other was $2 million for medical monitoring. And, as the, all the other litigation wound to a close of all of the neighbors and people that thought that they had been harmed by the health effects of, of that project, those things got settled, and they kind of entered into just the cleanup part of the project. We knew that we had these monies due us at some point. When the Howard Foundation stepped up to build a new hospital in response to their problems with their existing facility and earthquake compliance, one thing or another, we first stepped in at the city and, and offered to help by, by paying something over $200,000 from our redevelopment fund to do the seismic study to build the hospital that needed to be done in order to be able to build the hospital, which was a giant ditch out there, 60 feet deep and 20 feet wide to do the seismic study. So the city contributed that money then. And then, as Margie and crew kept having fundraisers to drive, build the hospital, and every, it started out at a, I'm kind of making this up as I go, Margie, but, but it was around a $17 million hospital, is what I remember when we had our first fundraiser. And we'd do a fundraiser and raise 25 or 50,000 dollars, and then a year later, we'd have another one, and the hospital was 21 million dollars, and we'd raise another 25,000 dollars. Three or four fundraisers, and I said, Margie, we can't afford to do any more fundraisers, this thing is just getting, is going up faster than we can catch it. You know, at which point, I guess, we all have to, to recognize the commitment and gratitude to the Adventist group that stepped in and said, well, we'll build the hospital. Well, in that process, in between, before Adventists stepped up, the city made a commitment to take, when we ever got the monies from the natural resources damages and the medical monitoring, we negotiated with Pepsi, that we would donate that money to building the new hospital. And that was a key fund of their process of trying to bring their project along with our other community fundraising things. When Adventists stepped in to take over the project, then we agreed that that money would be used, could be used to buy new equipment for the hospital, for the building of, in the building of the hospital, if they needed x-ray machine, that sort of thing. So, then that, that, actually, the Adventists never, never came to terms with being able to use that money in that way. They never, they never spent that money in the building of the hospital for reasons of contracts and labor and one thing or another. So, towards the, here, a last, within the last year, the foundation came up with the idea of, of that they would, if they would buy the equipment and donate it to the hospital, would the hospital, Adventists be willing to accept that donation? And that ended up being a game changer, I guess, or being an acceptable means of, of being a conduit to bringing that money into the, into the health and welfare of the community. So, that was concluded here about two months ago, two or three months ago, that, that process was completed. And we're welcoming the foundation here this evening to explain all of the good things that they were able to do with that money for the hospital. And so, that's my introduction. Sorry, but I think you needed some background.
I'm Margie Handley, president of the Howard Foundation, and we're here tonight to really thank you for everything that you've done throughout the years to help the foundation and the hospital, and to make this such a huge community project that we're also proud of. I might add, Bruce, that we actually had the, the project out to bid, and it was going to be 40, no, it was going to be $60 million, that's what it ended up being, 64 million. But we put it out to bid, we being the foundation, and the bids came in $20 million over budget. And there wasn't any way that we could borrow more money and go into debt that much. So Adventist Health stepped up to the plate, and that was a wonderful thing for the community and for the foundation, because now the foundation doesn't have that debt, and we have a wonderful new hospital. So, tonight, the whole gang is here. We started out, Jan Lampitch was the administrator, and Kevin Eric was the CEO of the hospital. Dr. Bill Bowen, of course, has been here, like me, forever. And Dr. Mills Masterson wasn't able to come tonight, but he was very instrumental in playing a part in doing the research that caused Pepsi to want to, to fund this. And the money ended up being $4 million. So we have held $4 million in the bank for about, I think, 15 years, waiting to see what, what was the best use of that money, and how could we spend it wisely and to enhance the care at the hospital. So, we've done that, and the, the staff is absolutely thrilled and delighted. I'm going to turn it over to Kevin, so that he can tell you from his perspective, and then he'll introduce Dr. Bowen. But I also want to recognize Arnie Mallow, who is our new executive director, because Arnie spent three weeks, intense weeks, ordering all of this equipment, getting all the purchase orders in line, and getting it all done before the deadline. So, it's been quite a project, but it's been wonderful, and we really thank you.
Welcome back, Kevin.
Well, thank you.
Good to see you.
Yeah, my name is Kevin Eric, and it's, it's actually an incredible privilege to be back right now. I actually came to Willets in 1997, and we had the privilege of being the CEO for the, at the old hospital location for 14 years. And during that 14-year period, I think probably 10 or 12 of those, we, we looked over blueprints and we did all sorts of crazy things, and there's lots of blood, sweat, and tears, but we were able to actually pull this, pull this thing together. And I am just so grateful, if most of you probably aren't aware, but the CEO that took over after I left, just left Howard Hospital, and I've been asked to come in, at least on an interim basis, to fill in. So to be able to work in this beautiful hospital, and I'll tell you, this hospital, I think, is more beautiful and, than I ever could have imagined. It turned out exceptionally well. And I also give Amy Ford a lot of credit for, for the excellent work that she did in helping to make this the way it, way it turned out. I mean, it is just a gorgeous little hospital. I'm going to let Dr. Bowen in a few minutes talk a little bit more about, about what's on this list. This is actually the list of equipment that was just purchased from, by the foundation with that $4 million of Pepsi money. And it's really going to go a long way to help, continue to help us be really a top notch. And it's really going to go a long way to help, continue to help us be really a top-notch medical facility. Even though we're in a small community, we actually have an incredible facility and incredible equipment. And that's thanks to the foundation, thanks to you as the city council and the excellent work that you've done and for Pepsi for what they were able to do. But right now we have, I think roughly three hundred and thirty some employees that actually work at the hospital, about two hundred and forty-five FTEs, full-time equivalents. So when you translate that into dollars, that actually is a sizable amount that comes back into this community to help support Willets. And I think it's just so incredibly amazing to be able to have something like this in our town here. And it's also wonderful to see so many familiar faces and names from years past. So it's been a great privilege and I'm really glad that I'm able to be here and thank you so much again for all that you've done. Dr. Bill Bowen?
I want to say thank you. It was an amazing project just to accomplish the purchase of all of these pieces of equipment. And it ranges through the entire facility. If you start in the emergency room, we have new gurneys that you can put a trauma patient on, an x-ray right through the gurney. We actually have an anesthetic machine going into the emergency department for use there. We have critical patients in the trauma bay. And that machine happens to be MRI compatible. So it will be the only facility north of San Francisco that can give a general anesthetic and MRI scan, which I think is, is really an advantage, especially if you're dealing with kids that can't sit still. Moving over to the, we're also getting, as far as the x-ray department, we've been able to update our software on our CT scanner, so we use half the radiation to get the same quality of film. We've been able to update a lot of the coils in our MRI scanner, so we have better resolution. New digital mammogram machine, it's a 3D, which is state-of-the-art, and we'll be able to keep those studies here in town. We also ordered some new ultrasound equipment for vascular studies. And moving over to the lab, we'll have the best microbiology department in Northern California. The only place that can compete really is Stanford. We can use spectrophotometry to identify organisms within several hours, so we at least know what bacteria or organism that we're dealing with. That should translate into shorter hospital stays because our antibiotics will be directed more specifically. Up on the ward, we have new hospital beds coming. We moved all the old hospital beds from the other hospital and now we're going to have better beds there. We're putting monitors in so that we can actually download vital signs directly into the medical record rather than having people writing them on a piece of papers and applying a computer and typing them in someplace. We're also going to have a new pulmonary function lab where there's only two hundred and fifty like it or equal to it in the United States, so we can do fantastic pulmonary function studies. Dr. Kalston Nukaya is going to be directing that. And I think that, you know, the things that have happened at Howard Hospital are unbelievable for the size of the community that we're in. And we're really indebted to everybody for that, especially Mills Madison. He was having a hard time sleeping one night and got a bright idea and talked to Ross Walker. And that's what really started the process of getting the funds from the Pepsi settlement directed toward the hospital. So it's really a wonderful thing that's happened. The entire staff is appreciative, but the city council is rolling this and it's going to make a fantastic difference in what we're performing here. I thank you all.
Thank you. Well, thanks for coming down and giving us an update on how that.
And I think you have the list.
Yes, we do.
You know, I, I'd just like to say that I am so happy that you decided to do the list instead of leaving it up to us. I mean, I, I've heard about some of the things that you've selected and, and, you know, they're, they're just bloody brilliant. I am so excited that you were able to use this money and, and use it as well as you have. So thank you very much.
And I would also, I would also just like to, to thank you all. Mills and I went down to San Francisco and, and met with attorneys and, and dealt with drama around, you know, around this money. And I just, I really feel like it's been a partnership between the city and the hospital and that the goal was to make sure that we helped as, to help as many Willets residents as possible. And I think that we have gotten there. And it, you know, there was turns along the way that it didn't seem like we were going to be able to get there and I'm just, I'm really happy to see that facility there that we can be so proud of and that it really is an economic engine, as was mentioned, for our, for our community. And I'm, I'm proud that that's something that's happened while I've been up here on the dais.
Thank you very much for coming and I appreciate everything. And I think the hospital is one of the greatest things that's happened in my time here. Very good. Thank you very much.
We're not sure if it's the best hospital or the best art gallery, but.
That is true, Bruce.
The restaurant, the restaurant.
Or restaurant, yeah. But anyway, anyway, thanks. We know you got, you don't, you don't need to stick around for the rest of the show.
The hospital was just awarded, was it trauma level?
Yes, we were just awarded trauma level four and also with plane change, we're actually a bronze recipient and we're going for gold. So that's another discussion maybe we're at the time.
Right.
You have your state-of-the-art win of the year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Margie.
Okay, we are going to now move along to another.
Streets.
Corridor enhancement plan study, and this has to do with the Main Street Corridor Enhancement Plan. Dusty?
Yeah. Pull it right up here for us. Always my eye test. Very quickly, we're going to be presenting you the, the final draft of the Willets Main Street Corridor Enhancement Plan. This is the plan for the, for the entire section of Main Street from city limit to city limit, not just our, our area of Main Street that's going to be relinquished to us at some point soon. And just reminding the council that you were able to unanimously approve the design concepts that are found in here at the September fourteenth meeting and staff is diligently working with Caltrans to figure out how best to merge those enhancements with the relinquishment project. And we're lucky enough to have some of our consultants with us. We've got John and Gillian with WRT and Allison with LGC. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to them and I'll be doing a quick presentation.
Good. Hi, Allison.
Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, Council. It's great to be back here to wrap up the Main Street Corridor Enhancement Plan. About two years ago, the Local Government Commission, along with North Coast Opportunities, partnered with the city to apply for this funding through Caltrans. We were successful in that application and then about thirteen months ago, almost today, we were able to actually start this project. So what I want to do before I turn the presentation over to John and Gillian from WRT is just to do thirteen months in review, a little bit of how we got to where we are, and then what they'll do is to give you a virtual tour of the documents so that everybody understands what's in there and how it can be used to move these improvements forward.
Can you just let me use it here?
Thanks, Dusty. Great, okay. Great, and so as, as I mentioned, when the Local Government Commission in partnership with the city received the grant funds from Caltrans, we issued a request for proposals and we had more than a handful of very talented consultant teams put in proposals for this project. And I'm just absolutely thrilled with the team that we wound up with, John and Gillian from WRT, also Farr and Peers, and we had the benefit of Farr and Peers working on this project as well as downtown streets and alleyways. And then also we had GHD on the team and also a big thank you to Caltrans, our funding partners, on this one. So before we engaged in the big charrette process that you might remember, we conducted a community survey. And this was administered online as well as through the newspaper and we had three hundred and forty-eight people respond. We asked folks questions about what were the most important issues on Main Street so that we could understand where to focus. And two-thirds of those respondents said that pedestrian safety, intersection safety, and supporting Main Street businesses were very important issues. So we took that really as our first design directive, understanding that residents really wanted to have a Main Street that was safe for walking, bicycling, driving, and also good for local business. And then in April of this year, we engaged hundreds of community members in a design charrette or a participatory workshop planning process. And we got folks out on walking audits. We actually had so many people want to participate in walking audits that I think we wound up with three or four very, very large groups and were able to spread out and cover north Main Street and then all the way down south of the Highway twenty intersection as well and really get the boots-on-the-ground experience. Thank you to North Coast Opportunities and to the farmers, the producers, and also the local chefs in the area for putting on really an incredible local culinary showcase. If you were there that night of the charrette, you remember the tastes in this room. This was a really flavorful event. Again, just incredible turnout, standing room only in terms of community participation in this planning process. And then after we engaged folks, vetted the concepts with agencies involved and came out with the first concept draft plan, we did this mock-up on Main Street in May where we were able to actually put in three dimensions, some of the bulb-outs and in this case we're seeing striping of the bike lanes, and really give it a try. Based on the fire department coming out and going through this mock-up and also watching big rigs and school buses navigate it, some changes to the design were made. And then as subsequent versions of the plan were presented to council and additional community feedback was received, changes were made to the plan as well. So there has really been an incredible amount of input that has gone into this. I feel really confident that the plan that's going to be presented to you tonight represents not only the community's desires, but also council's desires and just really takes the, the best of what modern transportation planning and, and urban designing can offer Willets. So with that, I want to turn it over to our very capable design team, John Gibbs and Gillian.
Thank you, Allison. Thank you, Council. This seems like a great night for Willets.
Busy night, huh?
This is a great night. You guys are doing amazing things here in your downtown. The hospital project sounded great. I'm glad I got to, to listen in on that. I was told that of all the great restaurants to go and visit, I needed to go actually to the hospital to get, to go to another great restaurant. So I'll make sure I get to do that on, on one of my trips because I haven't been there yet. I'm giving a pretty high-level summary of our, of our document because I think we, the, what Allison spoke to of the level of engagement, the amount of comments that, that we received during the planning process, the tweaks, the re-tweaks. Dusty, your analogy of the, of the erasers earlier was, was a good one, you know, because everything was erased, was redrawn. We did that a number of times. It was just a lot of really great input over the course of this project. To intersections, to, you know, we don't need to make that change, but here are the other changes that we, we can make. And I'm just, I really respected the guidance and the input that the community and, and council gave to us. So as, as Dusty expressed, this is the former Highway one oh one, what is now really Brown's Corner to the high school, Highway twenty, and, and the city's Main Street is really the, what we're, what we were tasked with, with looking at. Addressing issues of safety and sometimes pretty critical issues of safety, things that are just, we really needed to, to take a look at. Issues of access, how to expand access for cyclists, how to ensure access for motorists, large trucks being included in that, because there's still a lot of big trucks that need to make their way around town, delivering goods, et cetera. And, and I think, you know, not to, to say, you know, there were important complete streets and circulation changes, but with the bypass, there's also concern about economics of this town. So that, the blessing and the curse, and we needed, we need to address placemaking. And that's what the downtown project is talking about, that's what you guys were talking about earlier. That's what certainly the Highway twenty portion can, is, is still about, but the downtown Main Street portion as well. And just really getting that right, providing that framework because of all the community members that we've met over the last year. I have no, no doubt of the amount of, of talent and creativity that exists in this community to, to make something great. We certainly gave those ideas and amplified those ideas, but I think we also created a platform and the framework for more of that good work to happen moving forward in terms of beautification, placemaking, et cetera. So this is our table of contents and the inside page of the document. We tried to make a, a user-friendly document, something that people wanted to read and, and could get something out of. And it wasn't full of jargon. There were lots of good images about what, what was so important. I think we, we received very few additional public comments in its, in its final review. So I think that was testimony to, maybe to some of our accomplishment there. The, the table of contents introduces the project, gives some good background, talks about those existing conditions, but really importantly, it talks about the strategies and the concepts moving forward. A little, at a little higher level for the Highway twenty portions and then in a lot more specificity, obviously, for the downtown portions, which are subject to relinquishment. There's a number of appendices in the documents. These are the very technical transportation studies, cost estimates and things like that. We started with an introduction and captures what Allison talked to us about just a moment ago in terms of the outreach and the, the level of engagement. The existing condition summarizes, as you can imagine, just what's out there, what's out there now and the kinds of, of projects that we needed to understand and interface with, whether it was the Vettel Road Study, the bypass project itself, other transportation studies that have come before. So just really making sure we're coordinated with those other plans. An overall framework diagram just talks about the opportunity for continuous bike lanes. And this is as much in addition to any future rails to trails as well, you know, as a complement to that, to that concept as well. But there's an opportunity to provide continuous bike lanes along the corridor, connecting people to businesses, connecting people to the high school where it's not very popular to ride today. It addresses a series of intersections along the way. These are the purple circles with the stars. These are key intersections for vehicles, also for pedestrians. At Brown's Corner, it's a roundabout, for example, but up at Van Lane, as we talked about, it's all about, it's all about pedestrians. There's opportunities for gateways, for placemaking, a few strategic medians. There's some opportunities for that as well in terms of beautification and, and traffic Overall, along the corridor, it's those things that I, I just mentioned, but we also touch on some unique opportunities, the electric vehicle charging stations as people are, are traveling and mapping out their routes. That's another way to attract folks to town. There were a lot of parallels, or there was a really great parallel study going on that we wanted to embrace and, and bring into, to our concepts. There's also opportunities for, for green streets to treat stormwater before it goes into our local creeks. Opportunities for art. We spent a great day out at, at a Roots and, and talking with folks there and really getting inspired and how those kinds of artifacts and elements could be brought into, into the street design. The overall recommendations for south of twenty, these were a little higher level, but we looked at near-term and long-term strategies. This is still going to remain part of Caltrans, so we need to take the long view and look for incremental approaches and the associated grant funding that could go along with that. This remains a Caltrans facility, but within that, there's a lot of flexibility for, for pedestrian improvements, for bicycle improvements, and for beautification treatments as well. Brown's Corner, we studied a roundabout, we studied pedestrian improvements at Vettel Intersection in particular, and there were treatment. Intersection in particular, and there were treatments at Walnut Street, a little higher level, but there's some important concepts there as well, to be studied further in the future. Moving then, north of Highway 20, and all the way up towards the high school, here, we looked at a number of different intersections. We got some great feedback, and actually, we kind of worked on the valley intersection quite a bit, trying to get it, trying to get the balance right. And I think we ended up with some, with some pretty good ideas, and also some great flexibility within the plan, if further increments in the future are warranted. Here, too, we maintained access for vehicles, for larger vehicles, maintained sidewalks, enhanced crosswalks, addressed opportunities for beautification, also got really important feedback from a number of key businesses, and made adjustments to the plan accordingly, whether that was related to transit facilities, or just public space, maintained on-street parking all along the corridor. Just point out, at commercial, it's good to see more refinements going on there, associated with the downtown streets and alleys plan. Commercial intersection was definitely a focus of our work, making, or enhancing the turning movements, and addressing the left-hand turns onto Main Street from the east side of the intersection. There's an implementation chapter that both talks about the different kinds of funding that are available, but also starts to break the project down a little bit, what things would logically get implemented through a Caltrans relinquishment project. There's things that, you know, if we're striping the street, or we're redoing something, you know, it's just as easy to do it the right way, and something that really benefits the city. There's other things that would probably start to go beyond what a Caltrans basic project might be, and so, we talk about that as well, and other things that can be added in the future through grant funding. The point I'm really excited about, is back to one of my first points, is that there is so much talent and creativity in this town to kind of get it right, and to have some fun. And so, we're really excited about those kinds of streetscape elements, and signage, and elements of art that really make this, make this town really what it is already, but to really amplify that in the future, and to make it this destination that I heard so many people out there really want it to be. So with that, I think I just would say that, you know, in one's professional career, you have a couple really cool projects. And this is like, really one of those projects. And so, I want to say thank you to your community for really welcoming us to town, whether that was with coffee and cookies, or maybe even a pint of beer, and just, you know, really asking us hard questions and challenging us to do our best work. I think the council's direction, the interface with staff, has been tremendous. Allison and the LGC team have just been fantastic, and our subconsultants. Want to publicly thank Gillian again as well, just my colleague, who this project wouldn't have happened without all of her hard work. I hope that we have put the soul, as the earlier speaker said, I hope that we've, that the soul is going to be evident in the downtown of Willetts here very soon in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question, if I may. You alluded to South Main Street, and where that's always going to be in Caltrans Street. But have you worked with them at all during this process to see if they're, you know, what the probability, or possibilities, or their openness is to some of the things you came up with on South Main?
We did. They were one of our key stakeholders. Certainly, we were talking with, you know, two different sides of Caltrans. One was certainly related to North Main. But on the South Main piece, where they were going to retain ownership, we had to make sure that we could make some realistic recommendations. And so, we feel that those recommendations that are made, there's certainly a process to go through.
Sure.
But they're not unreasonable, they're not unrealistic. And there's funding, sometimes through Caltrans and other grants, in order to make exactly those kinds of additions.
So sometime in the future, when we give them a phone call, or Dusty gets them on the phone, or Adrian, and says, "We would like to talk about this part of South Main Street," they're not going to say, "Huh? What are you talking about?" They're aware that this is going to be a future discussion?
They are.
Yes.
Good.
Good.
I just want to specifically thank you guys. This was a huge undertaking, and yet again, the community really stepped up. I mean, you could see, we really had a lot of people in there, you know, weighing in on what they wanted to see Willetts look like, you know, 10 years down the road, to, you know, their biggest concerns. So I think it's really, this is my last council meeting, so it really is up to the council coming in to make sure that the hard work is really respected, and that, you know, the priorities, you know, get carried through, and that we really stand up to Caltrans and say, "This is really what the community wants, and this is how we're going to keep, Willetts is a really wonderful place to live, so that people will want to come here, just either because they live here, or because, you know, they'll want to access our really cool town." So I am really happy to say, this has been a long, it's been a long process, and I'm glad to see it done. And I do have a question, sort of in relation, I don't know, it might be a Dusty question. But in the alleyway study, and in this, we're talking about some dedicated turn lanes on I'm assuming our hope is that Caltrans will pay for that, for the signal change, before they, you know, during the relinquishment process? I just want to clarify that hopefully, they will take on the changing of the signal before it becomes ours. I would encourage us to do that.
Right.
You know, my comment is really that it was, it was an amazing community participation. This isn't the first project of this type that we've looked at, at the downtown, you know, and, but it was the first time that it's had this level of participation. I certainly credit part of that to the sense of urgency relative to the relinquishment and people's attention, but I think a lot of credit goes to your efforts of getting, inspiring people to show up. I'm not sure what you, how you pulled that off, but you certainly did, and you're to be commended for getting so many people to come out and participate, not just once, but multiple times. Because I was at one charrette here when we were doing an assessment of needs of the community, and it was determined, through the somewhat limited audience, but target-focused audience that we had, that the most important unmet need in the community was pickleball courts. So when, when you have a small, you know, when you have a small sampling, you get some, not that I've got anything against pickleball courts, but it was a little bit of a struggle for our consultants in that project to now then rationalize how to write their final report of all the things that we need in our community. So anyway, I do congratulate you for, you know, the wonderful turnout that we had, and the positive energy that everybody seemed to put to it. So, thanks.
And I just want to thank John, and Gillian, and Allison. Working with all of you has just been such a pleasure. And to have two parallel efforts underway at the same time was, felt a little daunting going into it, but I think, you know, we, everybody worked really well together, and we hope that you'll come back and join us in the future for either visiting, or if we have other projects down the road.
Do we have any public comment on this? I do have room for public comment. This is slated just to be approved by the council this evening. It's been approved before, but certainly willing to second, third, and last call, seen none.
Well, I would be happy to make a motion that we officially adopt this plan by resolution, the Willetts Main Street Corridor Enhancement Plan.
Yeah, just one thing, I'd be derelict in my duty if I didn't say one final item. It's kind of an advanced warning, or whatever, on this, on the plan south of Main Street, I mean, south of Highway 20. I really believe before long, we need to seriously look at a dedicated left turn lane all the way between Highway 20 and the railroad tracks, to give access to both of those high-volume properties that are in there. Now that we have, no longer have the traffic counts that we need, that we have, especially on Southbound 101, I think we have an opportunity to put in a dedicated left turn lane in that one block area. You will be hearing more about that. But, call the vote, please.
Councilwoman Jeff?
Yes.
Madam?
Yep.
Mayor Burton?
Yes. Thank you. So our next item this evening is a discussion and a possible action to approve a budget amendment for a full-time water operator and training position. Adrianus, and it sounds like it's got you written all over it.
It does. So at the last council meeting, we brought forward an item requesting approval of a half-time meter reader and a half-time parks worker to make up one full-time position, and that was rejected because of the impact of the general fund. We were also directed by the council to post for the position of a part-time meter reader, and we did that, and not unexpected to staff, we got a very poor response to that. Because it's not simply working a four-hour day, you know, every workday for the month. This is a focused effort for two weeks out of the month, and so you're talking about full-time hours for two weeks out of every month, and it's very challenging to find somebody to want to have that kind of schedule. So Steph and I sat down and to discuss this, and talk about, you know, what are our needs here, and what can we do to bring this back, to get the meter reader position filled. And so, the council had also, at the last meeting, eliminated a vacant water operator three allocated position, and just, you know, approved a half-time meter reader position. What we're asking for tonight, given the challenges in trying to fill that position as configured, is a full-time operator and training position, so it would be fully allocated from the water fund. It's still a cost savings to the Water Enterprise Fund, because we've gotten rid of the operator three position, and this is, you know, obviously, a much lower-level position, and there's no impact to the general fund. So in addition to doing the meter reading two weeks out of the month, the position will also provide general support around the water plant, and it will be a training position that they can pursue advanced classes and certifications, and have a path to grow.
I didn't see in my agenda summary, is it somewhere separate that the actual dollar amounts are included, or?
The dollar amounts for water operator three are $124,000 with benefits. For operator in training with benefits, it's $88,000, so there's a $35,000 savings approximately.
How much is the total of it? Again?
$88,000, and the savings is $35,000, a little over $35,000.
Do you have someone in this position, or someone in vision for this position currently?
We have had a seasonal maintenance worker that has been helping out with the meter reading, because we have been short-staffed there. So this would be an opportunity to bring somebody on that has become known to the organization, and has been doing a fantastic job, and water department would welcome this person.
How do you see this playing out over the long run? I mean, obviously, at some point in time, the operator will no longer be in training. So that would, I guess, require some promotion, or?
There aren't the same requirements with that, as there are in the wastewater plant, in terms of being an operator in training for a certain length of time. So there's no time limit on this. You know, we've had other maintenance workers that have chosen to pursue their water certification, and have been transferred over accordingly after they had passed the class, and certainly, this person could do the same.
So at some point, this person can either decide to stay as an operator in training, definitely, or something at that level, or move upward, and at that point, we look at the budget and see, you know?
Right.
We're talking about a year or so down the road.
At least, it would probably be longer. And, you know, with the operator positions at both plants, we have a succession ladder in place. And so, just, it's not like we would be in a scenario necessarily that we would have all operator threes. You know, we'd like to have staggered ladder there. And then, you know, as people retire or leave, we have people ready to step up even further.
And this also sounds like, I mean, this operator in training concept, I've always felt is a good idea. I mean, you've recently started the succession program in a lot of departments.
Yes.
And this is certainly a first step towards that. I think it's a good idea. Unless there's going to be a whole lot more discussion on this thing, I would move to approve the budget amendment for a full-time water operator and training position.
I would second.
What did you have, but, what did you foresee the cost of a part-time employee? What would have been that?
It was a non-benefited position, and I believe council allowed for $25,000, because it wasn't even a full, full-time, half-time position.
But when we advertised it, how much do, did we offer up in compensation for someone to take that job?
And this one is $1,591, if I'm...
So as a part-time, that's probably $15,000.
One of the challenges that we encountered with a part-time, four-hour-a-day employee is that when the meter reading is done, it needs to get done as quickly as possible. And so, you can't have somebody come in and do the reading for four hours a day, because then that would take all month long, and that would have an effect on our water billing process for the month.
And keeping an employee from being personable was the other consideration, that they couldn't work more than so many hours in a year.
Well, so, the, who was the, who was the, was it a retirement, or was it a, somebody? How did this job get opened?
Well, it was being done by a higher-paid employee.
No, no. The, but we're dropping this water, we have a water operator three in the budget.
Right. He's now our chief plant operator.
So Steve retired, Steve Anderson, earlier in the year.
Right.
We promoted clearance to the chief operator position, and then that left a vacancy for an allocated operator three position.
But we also promoted Scott to...
Utility superintendent.
Superintendent. So there...
So when we adopted this year's budget, we took out Scott's previous allocation, so we actually reduced the number of positions at the water plant. And even with that, we've been holding a vacant position.
And we thought there was going to be some overlap between water and sewer, that some of them sewer may be training to move over to water, but then that didn't, that didn't pan out, which is why it was budgeted out of three. But then, that didn't, that didn't pan out, which is why it was budgeted out of three.
All right. Anybody, anybody in the audience care to comment on this item? Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Madalena?
Yes.
Warren Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes. Now, we have a couple, we have a code enforcement thing, John.
Thank you for asking them to quiet down.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. I'm sure you're all aware that we did marijuana eradication back in August. What we're, before you're asking for is a resolution to go ahead and file liens on the property to recover the costs of this enforcement. We, Mr. Lance, myself, Chief Gonzalez, we're all involved in this. It really went quite a ways down the line, further than I expected it to. I really, really kind of expected them to bail out a lot earlier. And they just seemed to not take us seriously, not take us seriously until we ended up having to get a warrant and eradicate the plants ourselves. And as I mentioned in my report, it was kind of an astounding amount for us. And for someone to do this repeatedly in this city limits, I felt pretty strongly that, that if I approached it hard, if I said, "I'm going to take my first swing. It's going to be my best swing and the biggest I can," and given three days to eradicate the plants or start accruing a $500 a day fine on each property, and they elected to accrue the fines. They just held on until we had to go ahead and get a warrant and actually get a revised warrant because they had locked us off the property. And then, clearly, when we got back there with the warrant that authorized us to use force to enter, they had completely abandoned the properties. It was nobody there, nobody living in the houses, no furniture in the houses, no, nothing like that. And as you mentioned in my report, over 200 marijuana plants between the three adjacent properties.
Two different properties.
These are, this property owner owns four houses on a common driveway. And we found out later that the fourth house was also involved. But I hadn't had an opportunity to inspect the fourth house. And it was, it's actually on the outside of the common fence that fenced the rest of those properties in. And so, I didn't, at that point, have any legal right to go into the backyard and look. When we eradicated the other three properties, we did look through fairly large openings in the fence and see that there were. But by the time we got back there, it was gone. But I, you know, I feel pretty good about this. I think this had a tremendous effect in that after this eradication came out, and obviously it came out in the newspapers and everything else right away, I really didn't have any resistance on marijuana cultivation enforcement for the rest of the season, none. Everybody I talked to that was in violation cleared up their violation within days and had no resistance after that. So, I kind of felt like taking that big swing the first time. It's the first time I'd ever tried being as extreme as I could, as extreme as our codes would allow me to. And I think it actually worked. I think that the message, obviously, the fine, the threat of the fines and all that didn't really have the desired effect. But overall, with the eradication taken in mind, it had a great effect in that the whole rest of the season was pretty much a cakewalk for me. Somebody care to make a motion?
Well, I can make some comments and questions if I can. First of all, I congratulate you for doing this. And I hope I wasn't detecting a little, not guilt, but, you know, the felt, the need to justify taking the action because I think it was the correct action. As you know, we've been trying to deal with the situation for years. And because we've never really taken a swing with the bat, like you say, it's been pretty much ignored. But as you said, we've got their attention. But a question that I have is about the administrative fines. And I noticed that lien is for the code enforcement cost for the almost $8,100. What about the, what about the fines?
I can, I can answer that. Yeah, the fines, as John said, he assessed $500 a day. And his objective was to get their attention.
Right.
And to have them voluntarily eradicate this sooner rather than later. And they didn't. And those fines grew to $51,000. And ultimately, then, we went a different route to eradicate ourselves. And we get the court orders that allowed us to do that. What we're asking for is confirmation of the amount of the cost, $8,100. We can then place liens on the property. And then, we can, we can foreclose on those liens or the liens will stay valid until such time as the properties are refinanced or sold and we get paid through an escrow down the road. The fines, though, there's a split of legal authority or opinion as to whether or not a city may administratively lien a property to collect accrued code enforcement fines as opposed to costs. Our costs is $8,100. It's attorney fees, attorney, secretarial fees, John's time, police department time, city's, city staff going out there and actually physically eradicating, putting dollar amounts to all of those costs. There's no question but that we, as a city, that you as a city council may authorize the placement of a lien on someone's property to recover those out-of-pocket costs. But there's a split of authority or opinion, if you will, whether a city may do that without court approval to collect fines. And so, we're asking for confirmation of the cost of $8,100 and authority to lien that. And we're asking for your direction. What do you want to do about the fines? And if you, if you feel strongly about wanting to do all you can to collect those fines, then I would recommend that you authorize me to seek judicial approval of that and get a judgment, get a court order that allows that. Or maybe you don't feel so strongly about the fines since we've got the eradication and we'll recover our costs. So, if you want to know what you feel about the fines.
Well, you know, that brings up a philosophical discussion, obviously. And as you pointed out, the mere eradication of the plants had a powerful effect on, you know, everybody, pretty much, correct?
Yes, that was my assumption.
And really, for me, I think it's more about creating the atmosphere that we don't have this behavior as opposed to, you know, getting as much money as we can from people. So, you know, I'm not so, I'm not as motivated to go after the $51,000 if the action that you took did the job.
I think that...
So, are you saying that, I mean, is that, do you feel comfortable?
I can only give you my observations. But after this came out in the press, enforcing our ordinance that prohibits outdoor cultivation became a matter of a couple of visits. Instead of this and this and this over and over and over and over. That being said, I have also experienced an attitude out there in town where people say, "Well, the city council is simply not going to authorize you to lien me these, lien my property for these fines, so I'm not going to pay any attention to what you're saying." And I've had that a number of times, probably more than not.
It seems like we, to me, that we need to back up what, you know, what we have suggested is, you know, the expense to this. And I don't like the idea of just letting the fees rack up because you're going to harvest before, you know, the city comes and takes it down or who knows? I mean, I think that that attitude is out there. And I think it's the, it's that attitude that we want to combat.
Well, yeah, but I mean, the eradication deals with that. I mean, there's no...
I'd also like to mention here that this was the third violation of the same ordinance within a year.
Okay. So, I guess my question is, you know, we're talking about this case, but also going forward into the future. And like I said, a philosophical discussion. Do we want to go after as much money as we can? Or is it enough to eradicate a half million or million-dollar crop? I mean, is that, is that smart enough?
I think what we need to do is we need to, we have an opportunity to find out whether we have the legal authority to collect fines. I think we would be shortchanging our efforts here if we do not follow through on this. And there's, I'm not, I don't know how that's going to turn out, but we need to, I believe we do, but...
I agree.
Doesn't make any difference what I believe. But, and I think we acted in as expedient a manner as we could to try and limit these fines. I mean, that's what our, one of our goals of our, our new ordinance was, was trying to expediate the process so that we would not expose people to $500 a day fines for four months while we went through a cumbersome process to determine, you know, that we had the right to remove the nuisance. And, and so, I think that we need, we need to, we need to move forward on this. And I think, you know, the lien approach is kind of a, kind of a quiet way to address it in a way. It kind of, kind of disappears into the background for a while until you, I've been in a situation where I've had to lien somebody's property before. And you don't know that, you know, you kind of don't think you're ever going to get anything out of it. But, but nothing happens to that property until your lien is cleared up.
And that property owner knows they're not going to skate out the money.
Yeah. So, I think it's extremely important that we, we determine that we have this right or we don't have this right. And then, maybe down the road, if it turns out that we fail on that and we can't figure out a way to remedy it, then we tweak our ordinance to be more effective as a tool to address it.
I would like to make a motion to go with a recommended action.
Second?
Okay. But what about, what about this other question about the other liens? Do we, is it, should that be part of this motion or should be...
No, it's not on our agenda.
Just a direction or something or...
Our agenda item didn't put the public on notice that we'd be taking action to create a lien for the fines. We can't take any action to create a lien for the fines. You can confirm the amount of the costs, directing John Sherman to lien the property for the costs. And you can direct me to file an appropriate application with the, with the superior court to get a judgment for the fines.
Okay. So, can we just save that?
Is that your, is that your motion, Larry?
Recommended action, that's correct.
Thank you. That works.
That is, that is the recommended. Do we have any public comment on this item? Second, third, and last call, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Madalena?
Yes.
Warren Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes.
I'll move we approve adoption of the ordinance 2016-04.
This gives a city manager limited authority of a little higher dollar amount to go to contracts without a competitive bidding process.
Well, actually, we've already given that authority. All we're doing is, there's, well, there's one code section in the municipal code that says the city manager's authority is limited to $10,000. We're changing that to say, except as provided elsewhere in another ordinance that you adopted, giving her authority up to $45,000 on certain public works contracts.
That's what I was trying to say. Any public comment on this? Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes.
I'll move we approve adoption of the ordinance 2016-04.
Second.
This gives a city manager limited authority of a little higher dollar amount to go to contracts without a competitive bidding process.
Well, actually, we've already given that authority. All we're doing is, there's, well, there's one code section in the municipal code that says the city manager's authority is limited to $10,000. We're changing that to say, except as provided elsewhere in another ordinance that you adopted, giving her authority up to $45,000 on certain public works contracts.
That's what I was trying to say. Any public comment on this? Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes.
Yes. So, it looks like all of the business this evening. I do, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Second?
Yep.